All right, we're going to call the order. Uh, the work session for the Coches County Board of Supervisors, uh, to discuss the Sheriff's Department budget and then subsequently the jail district budget. Um, today is Tuesday, April fifteenth, Tax Day. For, for all of us here, you got till midnight tonight to get your, get your taxes in. Pursuant to ARS thirty-eight four thirty-one dot O two H, the public will have physical access to the meeting room fifteen minutes prior to start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. The board may attend in person or via Microsoft Teams. The public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the board supervisors. And public comment will not be taken. We'll begin with a roll call District One.
I'll speak this year.
District Two.
Comment this year.
District Three, Hansel and Ores here. All supervisors are present and in person. So we will begin, uh, first with Agenda Item Number One, but we'll go to Ms. Gilman for the, uh, intro to the agenda item.
Okay. So just to clarify for everyone, um, there was a little discussion at the beginning. We do have a jail district budget, um, meeting immediately following this one. It's just you have to adjourn.
Right, right. Okay, right. Alright. So this is just the jail.
Yes. So this is the sheriff's office.
Their sheriff's office.
Yes. So we have provided to you the full sheriff's office budget. This is everything, not just general fund. This is all that France, everything that we discussed. Regarding France last week with the financial position as well as included in here. And then we have the sheriff with us today to go over the highlights of his budget, uh, some different requests that he's making. And, um, answering any questions for the board. Take a look at the sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Chair, Board Members, good morning to you and thanks to my staff for being here also for detailed questions. As the sheriff, I'm going to be, it's leaning here, our business manager and my operation senior people. So real simple, we've, we've over the last, my thirteenth year sheriff, one of the things, uh, been working with Sheriff Gabriel on his budget as his commander back in the day. But long story short is, one thing that we've narrowed it down and, uh, being physically responsible with that, we restructured our office about eight years ago. Uh, reduced a commander position, uh, to put more people in the road. Uh, thought that was a priority. We had three commanders at one time. And as you see on the PowerPoint here, uh, they're moving it. Uh, challenges with the border, fentanyl, marketplace competitiveness, which is really going to, where I'm going to talk now. Uh, cost eleven in jail district resolution. I'm going to turn it over to Kenny during the jail district one, but, uh, three things since it hasn't changed in thirteen years with me is the education, prevention, enforcement. And those three things, so we do sixty-six percent of it, educating and preventing, uh, it's only thirty-three percent of the enforcement component we have to worry about, which is the expensive component of that. Uh, the goals on the bottom, orientation of development, which is a priority, that is, uh, the team within the sheriff's office all the way. Just so you know, we have our two bureaus. We have support detention, then we have the sworn bureau. And then we have a hundred volunteers that offset our mission. If you look at our sheriff's assist team, I would throw that out there to you. Uh, they equate just them alone, five point five deputies a year, by putting on the, the work they do for us and then search and rescue, which is a whole huge component for the rescue side. And sadly, over the border issues, a lot of recovery side stuff too, community outreach, and then the border security, being a border community. I, I want to hit on this, and this is one thing that we've seen the challenges, uh, from thirteen years ago was our cultural reputation within the community was huge to us. Uh, with all the scrutiny on law enforcement over the last, probably five years now, six years, starting with, uh, Michael Ron and Ferguson all the way to George Floyd and Minnesota, things that had no, no direct correlation to the Coches County Sheriff's Department, but it had an indirect impact for law enforcement. So, long story short, this recruitment retention is huge to what we do. If I can't recruit them, if I can't retain them, all we come as a expensive training ground for every agency in the state. Costs a hundred grand per deputy, for example, to get them off, give them a training, get them hired, and then get them on in a patrol car. That's a huge cost if I, if they come here and then they leave. And I'm just going to say our competitors right now are federal government, border patrol, in four years, border patrol's up at a hundred grand. Uh, we don't see a hundred grand DPS. I'm talking to folks at the Capitol, uh, our senator and congressman up there and ladies. DPS is looking at a fifteen percent right now. That's going to bring their salaries in seventy thousand. Anywhere in Pima, Tucson, Maricopa, I'd be looking for fifteen, twenty thousand to start off. We had a guy transferred. They had eight years with us when I was the DPS. They started him in the eighties. Benson PD's took, take two of my guys, they're starting him in the eighties. Long story short is, we're just in a very competitive market because of all that scrutiny. So we, we, we're in the bottom quadrant. Uh, look at the April study and then our own market site's been submitted. We're in the bottom quadrant. I've never advocated for being the best paid in the state. I've never advocated for, uh, even somewhere on the top quadrant. I've always advocated to be somewhere in the middle and average, and, uh, that's what I strive today. This, this administration, uh, along with myself, have prioritized the salaries because it helps them recruit, recruit and retain our people. That's what we're doing again this year. As you can see, from Kenny who'll speak on the jail district to me on the, on the other side of the house, is the fact that we're looking for, and I know Frank, I'm like, we did the two comparisons, uh, I remember you mentioned three percent at the sun sites for our first responders. So we did two comparisons.
And your, uh, jail pressure's upstream.
Yeah. Yeah, we, uh, we broke it down. I can, I think you might have these already. We actually looked at this a couple of years ago. Stacy, if I haven't seen this, uh, for the board members, we actually did a fixed cost, seven percent. As you know, the hundred thousand, the three percent versus somebody that makes forty thousand is a big difference. What we're looking for is, this is my goal, if you look at the, the comparisons at the previous boards and how you guys are looking at, uh, this would bring my deputies up to sixty thousand, the twenty-four hundred flat for all my deputies, corporal sergeants and above will be twelve hundred, and then, uh, admin twelve hundred. And that's the fixed cost from that on, uh, the six oh eight actually, um, is a total for that, uh, the Dean went to jail district and that's a little bit separate, we'll talk later, but that's a total funding request I'm putting forward to the board today on, on that. There's nothing else. We just got a grant from the state for seven hundred thousand for equipment. We try at the end of the year, deploy their grant or see if there's a little bit of surplus left that we can buy some equipment. Otherwise, we just, we really don't ask for much. Uh, I can't get it through an outside source. My biggest ask for this board is to ensure that my public safety team is adequately, uh, compensated. So, and we also did, uh, Mr. Chair, when it comes to the three percent, one point one percent, they're making copies for you. I apologize. I should have, I thought you guys might have the service. My apologies. So, um, and there's two comparisons there. So it's a lot more attractive to go advertise around the state at sixty thousand per seat, uh, under. And then the same, it bring my detention officers up to fifty thousand, just to throw that out there right now, which, uh, is very low. Not a lot of money, uh, but in the big picture, a rural county, I respect too. I do. And that's why we, most sheriff's offices in the state are sixty-five thousand right now, starting.
Yeah, our, our problem is our population, and we, I've said it a million times. Um, we're, we're the sixth highest taxed county in the state right now. Right? Property tax wise. We're right up there as well with sales tax for a county, county sales tax. So the reason the revenue isn't coming in is because we don't have the population and the property value to generate the adequate amount of revenue to support a lot of the services that everybody's demanding. And that is not just with Sheriff's Department, that's public works, right? Paving roads, it's the health departments, everybody else is screaming. You know, the problem is, we only got a hundred twenty-five thousand people in this county. That's what's killing us. And, and if you look at, like, and we don't have the Palo Verde Nuclear Power Plant to subsidize us like Maricopa County's got, which they, that is a boom for them, property tax wise. So they, they're like one of the lowest taxed counties in the state, Maricopa County is, because they have the broad tax base. So they get to take advantage of that. We don't have that. We have a very shallow tax base. And we have all these services demanded, including your department, to pay for it. The problem is, we have to figure out how to balance those priorities, which is, which is a challenge. Because I could tell you, um, I'm speaking just for myself here, you know, the, the, the number one issue that I heard was, uh, roads. And this county is, is just by far overwhelmingly high. And that may be because you're doing such a good job that there's no squeaky wheel there. Because you've got, you know, the, the public is satisfied with the service that you're providing, but they're also not happy that we're not balancing resources across the board to increase road maintenance and fixing other roads or building other roads. So that's part of the debate that we're going to have is, is how do we balance those priorities? But I do understand the deficit with regard to salaries for your, for your deputies, and I'd like to make sure we keep it somewhat reasonable. I mean, I mean, your guys also get a nice benefit of living in a rural county. Lifestyle out here and the cost of living should be a little bit less than living in Pima County and Maricopa County. So, I mean, there's a cost of living offset that has to be sort of mentioned in your, in your recruiting. And it is a nice county to live in. Let's just, let's just say. But the one, one of the other things I want to talk to you guys about, particularly with regard to, you know, I, I got the fentanyl and the border stuff. What are you thinking, just to be straight up, the impact now that the federal government is starting to finally crack down on this stuff? What, what is the impact to the money you're getting federal grant wise? Cause now they're going to say, hey, you don't need this money now. Um, you know, the, the border's getting locked up, you know, the fentanyl traffic is down sixty percent, the border crossing is down ninety percent. You know, that's what they're claiming. I mean, I saw that on the news just the other night, ninety percent decrease in cross-border traffic, sixty percent decrease in fentanyl trafficking. So they're going to say, well, you know, that's done. You know, you had, last time we talked and forgot, you had us in the, uh, we had executive session, you had a whole bunch of deputies working on all the human trafficking, the drug trafficking, you know, is that, is that impact going to be reduced now? And the funding that you get from outside the general fund going to go down? And are you going to come to the general fund to ask for more money to offset that? This is kind of a concern I got.
Mr. Chair, Board Members, that's one thing we've been discussing with the state. We, by the way, we have less than, uh, one percent, Slank, right now on that percentage of federal funding. The state is our partner, not the federal government.
State, state's the big, the big one, yes. They, I was told last week, I was up at the Capitol, that, um, they're allocating fifty million for border again.
So we feel very confident that we can sustain. I don't want to let go of what we have in the fact, because once you let the doors back open, then guess what happens? Even though we got administration doing the right thing with us. Uh, I had a meeting last week, and I know we talked a little bit in that echo session. I don't want to bring it out here yet. I can have a one-on-one with you all if you wish. About a national program with the White House, we should be here in this week that will impact Coches County and everything we're doing with that border center. Uh, you look at DOD, Partner of Defense, that's hubbed here. Um, I've got a good big visitor coming this Saturday, I'm sure with you offline, we're going to be meeting. That, uh, we've been, we'll be participating in and stuff. But these are all revenue gathers. I know it's not a business, but it is. I mean, you look at the military hubbing with us with our border center, go to Eagle Shippolti, like I did yesterday, for another meeting at one o'clock in full military. That's all revenue generated for what we're doing. Long story short is, we're going to sustain what we have because the money's being allocated for us. And, uh, I don't expect and anticipate coming back and asking for any border funds. I haven't done it since I've been sheriff. And, uh, because I understand the budget and the reality of a rural county. So that's how we've been innovative and creative, going out and finding these funds with the state partnership and, uh, spoken, you name it, trying to make sure that happens. But the federal government is stepping up. I got a call Friday on some more money coming they want to do with us. All because of that border initiative that the previous board and you guys are continuing to support. And as long as we're working there, I think that's going to bring us positive gain in that way. And at the end of the day, it's a quality of life issue that we're pushing. I will answer that. Yeah.
Any other questions? Let's go.
So, because that is a concern, right? Cause everyone's hearing, everything is going to be looked at thoroughly. And so, you know, the question is, how are we going to sustain it if we don't have that kind of funding from the state? And that's what we're saying, ensuring that that's going to continue. Um, do you see, I mean, you know, like I look at whatever comes to Coches County, by the way, the federal government is great, and can it be sustainable? So if it makes big changes, like, I'll say, Coches College in Douglas or something like that, can we look at it as something that would be there continuously? Or are we going to have to look at, okay, it's here for three years? Then if something changes and then, which I guess can happen anyway, but are you looking at the sustainability of something?
We, we look at that, that's big to us. And the fact that, the last thing I told the previous board, and I'll share it back with you all, is the fact that we don't want to start something, it's like the COPS grant, uh, Kathleen. The COPS grant is, and I'll just say it publicly, um, is the fact that, hey, we can give you money to hire a new deputy. So they give you seventy-five percent the first year, fifty percent second year, last year's twenty-five percent, and then you're stuck with that bill.
Okay.
That's not a sustained cost that I, I like. I want to make sure I can cover one hundred percent to include EREs into a program. And now that we have a line item at the state under, it was the board fight for us, uh, now it's a law, local border support, local border support, they changed it. So right now, we're allocated, I'm just under two million a year, and that's an ongoing budget. There, they took the fund from twelve million, the government wants to bring it to twenty-three million, she told the sheriffs and I that. The state legislative folks brought up the fifty million, and that looks like it's going to happen. So we'll take that extra funding and our part of that saying, since we're a border, and we're a hub for the state with this border center, that we'll say, hey, now we want to cover our Saver Camera Operation, now that money too. And that's where we're going to fly.
So the border center is the one that you just opened up?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, the one you toured.
Right. So just one other question, how do you see that kind of, um, activity, being able to, to impact outlaying the areas like Douglas or, you know, St. Wilcox or Benson? How do we spread that so that it's just not all in the area and that other, you know, that we can really make this county kind of prosper with this whole border security hub thing and not just be one specific area?
Don't, don't let the location, uh, justify you on the operation. We spend probably sixty-seven percent of our time in Douglas. On one ninety-one and the areas of Lutz Canyon, the ops, it's, it's driven through where the intel is that day. So just because the center's over there, it doesn't mean that's where the operation is every day. It's just a hub. Last year, we, we served, uh, Carl, the guy with the beard right there runs that, uh, offside while Captain Williams back there. They did fifty-four shirt forms of that center last year. It took us all the way, Douglas, you saw before, we did last, all the way into Phoenix and beyond from human traffic and you name it. It's incredible things we're doing with this center. It's just hub there because trying to find a facility of that magnitude. And then, uh, with the military partner with us up there too. So, and then some of the stuff that I talked to you offline, I don't want to do it public, but that's amazing what's coming, uh, the White House for that center too. So that's attractive with things for this county. And the training aspect, I know that you and I talked about pushing that really hard for your area. So we're going to keep doing that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I got a couple, just a routine questions here. I, I talked to Focio about, uh, fleet costs and, and, you know, the process of turning in a vehicle to get a new vehicle and stuff. And so I'm trying to get a handle on how many vehicles you guys have that are patrol vehicles that are given to your deputies that are out? And I, I get it, those guys, they take it home, that's fine, because they can come out at any time. I get it. That's a, but how many other county vehicles does the Sheriff's Department have that are not being used for deputies? That they're not patrol vehicles, they're not lights and sirens, they're not, you know, do, do you have any idea what that is?
I can get that to you, Mr. Chair. I, I can say it's very small.
Oh, is it?
It's very small. We don't, we don't even have admin cars for our staff to run to the post office and stuff. They drive their own person.
So I'm looking at like, two point three million dollars in fleet charges. That's a lot of money. So I'm just trying to get a feel for,
Mr. Chair, if I can add this, I don't know what the exact number, I think it's like forty plus maybe fifty grant funded vehicles that had maintenance costs attached for three years. And my commander, that's, I'll be in rural, I've worked at, um, but long story short is, there was a, there was a big misunderstanding when we did this, that these were just add-on vehicles and we're going to be sitting in a parking lot that we can use at our disposal. Well, we're replacement vehicles that the county had already collected the funds for replacement. Now you've got a free vehicle for three years. There is a huge cost savings. And I know when the fleet director and I spoke, the new fleet director, Jason, did, I got a lot of respect for. He actually had to go back and revise a lot of stuff that was outdated, not to be ill. And, uh, cause I said, this should be such a huge cost savings to the county that you're not having to buy tires and oil changes. That's all covered under the grant, a state grant, by the way.
And Mr. Chair, if I can, you know, real quick, we right now are predicting that we're going to give back about five hundred thousand dollars in fleet at the end of the year that we saved because of what Sheriff's talking about.
Okay. So we're, that's been a big request from me, uh, by staff, for staff, Sheriff, can we get some admin vehicles? And I'll add this, seventy-five percent of all my sworn folks work in a patrol capacity, twenty-five percent work in a special ops capacity. Uh, and that varies maybe one or two percent, then almost going on there, uh, uh, people retiring, things like that are quitting. So, um, the seventy-five percent of all my fleet is, plus or minus, is on the road somewhere, on the road. The rest are in special ops, like detective.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm going to begin with Stacy on a lot of the stuff too, because I already talked to her about a couple of the other, I need, I'm looking for more detail, uh, breakout on some of this, like your, uh, uh, contractual services, for example, what are all those? I just, I just curious to know what, what were contracting for, right? Cause there's, you know, that's a significant amount of money that goes out to, why aren't we doing a lot of this? Or is it necessary or whatever? I'm, I'm not questioning, I just, I just want to look at it. I just want to, want to see what it is. Um, there was, there was another one. Oh, the, uh, the joint dispatch expense. So we went over to CCOM, Kathleen and I, um, she explained the Tammy Joe.
Yeah, Tammy Joe.
Explain the Tammy Joe, Terry Joe, there's lots of Joes. So the, the, uh, the franchise fee, or not franchise fee, subscription fee, I'm sorry. I got franchise fee on the brand from earlier. So the subscription fees, is that the nine hundred K that you guys are allocating here? Nine hundred thirty-eight thousand, is that what that is? Is that to pay the CCOM fee based on your call volume? Is that what that is?
And that is, that's a cost model that is under revision right now, but that is a rough number. I just wrote for from last year. We are looking at two.
Uh, that was, uh, four. Yeah, four. It was, yeah, halfway down, joint dispatch expense, nine hundred eighty-two thousand dollars.
And I don't know if you recall from the early revenue session that we went over, I had projected an increase to that, and we're still looking at an increase to this year.
Which, I was pretty, I had a different perspective of that CCOM place. I just take the name. I always say that because I, my military background, you know, you have forces command, you have fleet command, you have, it's, I keep thinking there's an aircraft carrier parked off of Sierra Vista somewhere, you know, when you hear CCOM, right? It's C Command, you know, that's a, that's my mentality. So it just, it, the name throws me off. But I, I actually was pretty impressed, uh,
It's good.
With the business model that she's trying to implement over there, which I think is a really good idea.
Wait, Mr. Chair, if I could add on to that. That, that was a vision by Chief Alina when he was the chief of service to police department and myself. We just didn't have the funding to do it. And we were blessed that we had a private donor come in that asked me what we need in Coches County. First met him, first took over thirteen years ago, and I said, we need an IT upgrade. And he goes, we were one part away from losing our nine-one-one system in Coches County. And, uh, and so I put a three-phase proposal together. I think, Kathleen, you got some of the stuff that I shared with you. And, um, the third phase was the regional concept, and he bought me on it. You know what I'm talking about? And, and he bought me on it and said, I, I'm giving the money to the sheriff. I'm not giving to the police departments and others. I said, but we're a rural county, we have to regionalize that. We'd love to see autonomy built within that center at some time in the future. We're getting close. Um, and so we did it, he conceded, they, he built another center in the Midwest, just like ours. We mirrored it off ours because it was successful. And I tell you, we've got growing paint, that'll be the first, but starts with a good leader. Tammy Joe's our leader. She's done an amazing job.
We gotta figure out the personnel thing and, and then if she goes to that subscription model, and then we, I was using, for lack of a better term, I was using, uh, tax deductions. Um, where the county gets credit for what we put into it regarding resources, human resources, IT resources, whatnot, where we get the, sort of a discount rate because we deduct that, you know, but I also look at, looking at it from just a pure business perspective, and I talked to her about it, is that that fee rate has to be commensurate with covering cost. And right now, I don't think it's there. That's just my two cents. But she's trying to, uh, build up to that, and I get it. But until then, it's going to be heavily subsidized until, until she gets that structure in place. But eventually she'll, I think she'll get there. I like the idea. I really like the concept that she's running with, so.
She's very motivated.
It changed my, it changed my opinion. I had a different perspective. I was thinking it, because I got an EMS background, I was a paramedic for twelve years, and I worked with comp centers and counties in like half a dozen states. And in those states, the county runs the comp center. It's a county-run nine-one-one operation, county-run dispatch operation. That's usually what I was used to. So that's what I was thinking. I'm thinking the county should be running this, not.
Very, very small counties.
Right. Well, this is, you know, you know, Montgomery County, Tennessee, and, you know, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, and, you know, Cumberland County, North Carolina, where, where I moonlit, you know, working weekends as a, as a paramedic and, you know, stuff like that. So the, the concept though was, they run it as a county operation, right? And it, all the various county services, fire, police, sheriff, was molded in under that. And then there was a mutual aid for neighboring counties that, that was, was set up. But when I first got here and I saw, of course, what happened on December thirty-first with the, with the meeting and everything, and I'm thinking to myself, you know, this, what is Sierra Vista doing with this? And why is, you know, all this fighting between whose people and what? You know, I'm like, this should be a county operation. That's, counties run the comp center for the services. But then when I went over, talked to her, and she explained what the vision was, I'm like, oh, this is a better idea. I actually like this, this concept, the subscription-based concept. And it's a kind of private, a hybrid privatization, which I think is a great, great thing too, because I, I think that's a good, good approach.
Yeah, we're, we're very happy with it. I tell you, some of the best dispatching in the state is coming out of that center. And the standards, standards that are in place, the automation's in place. After my four decades of being around dispatch center in Coches County, I'm, I'm just tickled.
It's going to take a while. I think, what did we say, Sharon, it's like ten years to phase in the employee issues?
Right.
Yeah, about, about ten years, but, but, uh, yeah, I like, I like where she's going with it.
Thank you. Thank you guys for seeing that.
Yeah, and then, um, where is it? There was another one in here that I, I had seen that we're going to, oh, go ahead, go ahead while I'm, while I'm looking.
Sheriff, do you have any idea either by percentage or numbers, how many of your patrol deputies live in the immediate Sierra Vista area?
So what, in fact, I just did a re-ord yesterday, uh, one of the things I always do is try to come, we have three regions for everybody's benefit. We have a northern region, which includes the northern part of the county, a region, kind of like you guys are all split up.
Yes.
And then Sierra Vista region, uh, parts of Isby here. So we do everything we can to make sure our deputies live in those regions. It's based on community policing, but also based on an efficiency. So, uh, they run two squads over there. Well, every region has a couple squads. So I'd have to break the numbers down, but it's pretty much equal based on illegal data, based on call data, and making sure that we can respond anywhere in the county on that one call. So it's split up evenly. So all three quads have equal numbers for the most part.
Okay. Would it be fair to assume that most patrol deputies live in the Sierra Vista area?
I wouldn't say that, no. Um, you gotta, I could give you exact numbers and, but you got. In fact, when you visit, Kathleen, I think everybody you met worked in Douglas or lived in Douglas.
I see them a lot in Douglas, especially live there.
That, that's the hardest thing for being the thirty-eighth largest landmass county in the country is to evenly spread the thin butter to make sure. And that's why the take-home vehicles are so important, because the two.
Yeah, yeah. Again, I got two guys that live out by me. I see the cars parked so, out there.
The last thing I do, and we have maybe two exceptions right now, where leadership has to drive into one region to the another. Um, so, but most people live in the region. So I think there's, we're, it's kind of walking. Bob, what do we have in Douglas, for example, region three, live in that?
Mr. Chair, thank you, Sheriff, uh, Board. Um, your question, Sheriff, is how many people do we have living in Douglas?
Yeah.
The majority of the new people that we recently hired, um, not this last academy class, but the academy class prior to that. Uh, out of the sixteen people assigned to work region three, I would say fifteen of them reside in the Douglas or El Frida area. Um, the only area that primarily is, our deputies do not live in is region two, which is Wilcox and Benson. We have a difficulty recruiting people from that area and getting them to stay there. So some of the deputies assigned to Wilcox reside in Sierra Vista. And there's a few that live on the county line, just between Vale and the county line. There's a few there that live in that area.
And they don't want to take their car home because, but the state law has changed that, that they don't have to live in the county they work. State law changed that, just so you know. Um, we enforce them to live here, but they got to be able to go on call and leave the car at the Benson office for those that don't live there. The hardest area is Bowie, Wilcox, or Bowie essentially.
Mr. Chair, if, if I may clarify, Mr. Chair, um, none of the deputies live further than Vale, right? And those ones are assigned to the Benson region two area. So please don't think that we have people living in Morana, driving a patrol car to and from. So, uh, we, we try and keep them, um, assigned to a very close region of wherever they live. And the deputies outside of region one, which is Sierra Vista area, they're on call. So they're expected to be at a call for service anywhere within their region within an acceptable timeframe. Mr. Crosby, did you have quite, supervisor Crosby?
My, uh, my concern, the reason why I asked that is because of the overlap. So, uh, just off the top of your head, how many police officers in Douglas?
They're about six.
Mr. Chair? Like city cops.
Oh, they're, they're, they're too many of them.
They're, they're, he's talking about an overlap of sheriff's service and, well, forty, I think they got these forty.
How many police officers in Sierra Vista?
Sixty-seven.
So that's what I was looking.
So what are you saying, that there shouldn't be resources in there?
No, well, it's something to consider, like the additional expense that Sierra Vista incurs in the jail.
But there's very specific things that a sheriff can do that a local policeman will not do, right? I mean, it's very different in what Douglas police officer does versus the sheriff.
We have additional duties on civil mandate alone, court mandates that when it comes to processing that we do. The other aspect of that, I'll say that, you look at Pertiville, those areas in Douglas that are not.
Like Bay Acres.
You Bay Acres, another one, Fry Township, Haymore Plaza, Gulf Links, parts of Foothills. I mean, I can go on, Rich Carmella. Those are enclaves that are inside the city that we're responsible for. That, I mean, the bottom line is, people, people don't care when there's a 911 call. They expect a cop to come help. And that's, we don't have a plethora of numbers, I can tell you that much.
I just know like Bay Acres and Pertiville are, have some serious issues.
Big issue.
With human trafficking, the drug trafficking, to the point that, you know, even having lights been taken out. So the Douglas police is not going to go there. They're not going to go to Pertiville or Bay Acres, it's the sheriff that they call. And so, and at least that's what I understand.
It's us, and Kathleen, I will say this too, is we have a great relationship with all the police chiefs in the county. They help us out in our time of need. We help them out in their time of need. It's multi badge, one mission approach. So they don't have a plethora of numbers. People can say they do, but they don't. Sierra Vista, obviously, Sierra Vista and us, I know Tammy Jo told me, in the first three months of the year, what, this year, we had 18, it was 12, no, we had 12,000 calls, Service PD had 12,000 calls, just in the Sierra Vista area alone, that were county proper, city proper. That shows you how both agencies are so busy. That's just that area alone, and.
You know, there's this theory that Sierra Vista is where all the crime, you know, happens, that, oh, you have to really just focus on that. And I would say that most of the.
30, I saw the numbers, like 32% or something like that comes out of Sierra Vista, which is one-third of the crime in the county.
And the other third, or whatever, comes from Douglas area, which is less populated, but which has a heavier, you know, cartel kind of influence that's been there for decades, right? So Douglas and Pertiville in that area is very unique and different than Sierra Vista.
They are.
Or Benson and Wilcox. It's almost like they could be in a different state. Because the economics, the, you know, being right by that port and having the past 20 or decade or 20 years of criminal activity being the only industry really in Douglas besides the prison, has created a whole different environment than you have in Sierra Vista.
Well, I know about the county islands, and I know about the mutual aid agreements and so on. So I think that, I think that we can all agree that Sierra Vista has most of the law enforcement presence between the police and the sheriffs that live there. Can't we? I think we can agree.
Well, what's the point of that?
Well, it should be more evenly spread to places that, well, you're just talking about Wilcox.
You can't force people.
Where to live, whether you can, whether you can force them to live, or where they, where they want or not, you still have, you still have people who take home rides that are, majority of them in Sierra Vista as opposed to Wilcox.
Well, they're off duty, but they can be called out at any minute, you know, and then they have a certain amount of time.
Drive to Wilcox, an hour. That was the point I was making. I think it's heavier in Sierra Vista.
So do you, so you want to create a housing allowance to encourage guys to live in Wilcox?
I'm gonna encourage a Spanish proficiency bonus.
No, but what I'm getting at is, you can't force guys where to live. They have to be able to be within a reasonable distance. You know, I drive an hour to work and back. Takes me an hour and 15 minutes to get here. It takes me an hour to get to the greeting card company, you know? So, so that, that is something you gotta decide as your own economics of your family and whatnot.
Mr. Chair and Board Member, one thing that, Mr. Crosby, to your point, is we do predictive policing about every three years. We go back and look at our analytical data to see how many calls per region? How do we allocate our resources? And that's a tough thing to do when you have thin resources. That's why I have the 75-25 quota. I say quota, it's a bad word, but allocation. But we look at that all the time to make sure that we're not overindulged in one area versus another area, because when Bowie hits 911, they expect a cop to come. And we gotta make sure we can provide that resources. And I'm very big on that, and all my command staff is. But I can tell you one thing, I can promise you one thing, we're not overindulged in any of the regions. I can promise you that. And if I had 40%, I was talking to my nephew's a cop up in Nevada, in a metro area, and he was telling me a town of over 100,000, and they have over 100 cops. Here's a town with over 100,000, be 130,000, they got 100 cops. He works the midnight shift with four other cops.
Tucson, Tucson's so understaffed.
They are.
20, right? You got a half a million people in that town, and they got a fraction of the police force.
So, and that's, my point is, we make sure our, our marked units, our patrol units, our prevention units are out there in those communities. And that's, I just want to make sure that's really clear. And that's why we have stayed above the fray on recruitment and retention because of the colleges partnership with Academy, with our relationship, with our police departments, and also just our reputation as county. And because EPS right now and Board Patrol, they're grabbing our people. Anytime they recruit my crazy, Benson PD of all places. So trust me, when I sit there and say, I'm taking care of these guys, and you're taking care of them, we'd lose that. I'm in trouble. I'm in trouble, you're in trouble.
Yeah, again, it goes back to economics, right? Economics is the problem. It's, you know, we'd love to have the tax base so that we can fund you guys to, to whatever that level may be determined is the optimal number. But the problem is, we can't.
And Mr. Chair, I always give this board a commitment, like I did the previous boards I've worked with, that we'll always do our part to look at efficiencies, cost savings. We're just talking about our phone plan. Right now, we're paying Verizon, and I don't think it's real effective. T-Mobile stepping in there, yes, and they're like a lot cheaper. So we need to look at that. Anytime I can find a cost savings, we'll do it.
Yeah, I got you. I mean, we've been having discussions with several, trying to bring businesses out to Cochise County. And here's what we hear. Sales tax is too high, cost of living's too high, Coach, because almost everybody's over 9% now, some are over 10%, 10% sales tax. Property taxes are not exactly low compared to the other counties, because Maricopa County actually has less property taxes, which is a bigger county, Penal County, which is another growing big county, it's got less, they're, they actually cut their taxes 6%. They did a 6% property tax cut last year in Penal County. Why? Because their population is growing. Now, we're on the other end of the equation, our population isn't growing and it's aging, and our debt, our tax base is shrinking, so the pressure from services is growing while the revenue is declining. And that's the conundrum that we're stuck with here, that we're trying to, trying to figure out. So we have a chicken and egg problem. I can't get businesses to come in because they're like, none of our people want to live there because it's going to be 10 cent sales tax, or it's going to be this, this property tax compared to Maricopa County, compared to, you know, where they're all going. You know, that's where all the businesses are going, is Maricopa County. So how do you get businesses to come out here if you don't have the cost of living, the tax base? The housing is the other problem we ran into. We talked to them, there's no adequate housing for the lifestyle level that a lot of these businesses are expecting, right? There's just that offset, and that means they gotta build it. So we, we're struggling, we're trying to get that hope, get over that hope economically in this county so we can start to grow. And then, of course, you have the cave society, the citizens against virtually everything. They want to oppose trying to grow businesses in Benson, trying to grow businesses in Douglas, trying to grow, because then they want to, they want, oh no, I want my little world to stay the same. But it can't stay the same. I mean, you grow or die, and we're dying right now. So trying to figure this out is the challenge. Mr. Crosby?
Yeah, with regard to benefits and higher salaries for your personnel, are you willing to sacrifice numbers of personnel to get higher salaries and benefits? Or you want both?
We've already sacrificed our positions, like the commander, as a prime example. So we've given up a commander's spot to put more deputies on the road. And that's where there's this, and that's why we went out and sought the extra grants, like Kathleen, you're asking about, to bring in those resources to help the program, especially over the last four years, we've been, we were in dire straits. We could have easily said, not my problem. We didn't do that. And to answer your question is, I just don't know where you cut from, Mr. Crosby. And not that we, and I asked the chief Bob this last week as we're going over budget preparation. We take this very serious too. We are, we're not an agency that says, I know you saw our budget from Stacy and John last week. I apologize if I wasn't there, I had to be up in Phoenix, I had a meeting with, up there doing some things that we just talked about. But long story short is, I don't know where we can cut from. We can always look at, I mean, we've cut support. We, I have a part-time person just answered one at reception, we didn't fill that position. I mean, we, Stacy knows what I'm talking about. I don't know where else we cut from. I don't.
Every department head is going to face that same question.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's a bad question. I haven't been in the legislature back in 2008, 2009, and we had a $3 billion budget deficit. I heard that all the time. You have no place to cut from, but you have to sometimes find, find cities.
And within the command staff, I mean, there's a lot of discussion every year. I know Commander Wiggins and myself, you know, sometimes disagree with the sheriff. And we're, you know, we, instead of asking for salaries this year, let's ask for staff. Because we don't want to come to you guys and ask for everything, all kinds of stuff. You know, we want 10 wish staff, we want, you know, another $5,000 for every staff. But we're not doing that. The only thing that we come for is mostly is just salaries. We haven't asked for staff, additional staff in years. I can't remember the last time I asked this Board for staff since I've been sheriff. I don't know if I ever have.
No, I got you, but that's why I'm looking at like your fleet costs, right? I'm looking at your maintenance costs, right? I'm looking at your professional services and contracts, right? These are, these are areas that have the potential for cost reduction. Not, not going after your bodies, or not going after, you know, the ability to maintain the levels of service that you have established currently in the county. But is there somewhere in this budget? That's why I say, who's your budget person? Yeah, you guys know each other. Three of us will sit down, and I know my two colleagues want to set up, because of open meeting law, we all can't do it together. But I mean, you know, set up separate times where we can come in and go through some of this. I just got, you know, some details, I want to break these out in a little more detail to know what some of the specifics are on here, and see if we could find some costly, sit down with a couple other agencies. I've already seen overlaps of services that we're paying for on some of these contracted services that we're actually paying sort of for the same thing in different departments. And why we can't consolidate that under one service contract is beyond me. You know, that's some of the stuff that I want to look at. But, and then another thing that we're looking at trying to offset, to find cost savings to ship money into is the ESRS liability. So we're looking for cost savings to start increasing the paydown on that initial liability. Try to get that number down.
If I could throw a success story into, Mr. Chair. So we've lost two people who were last year, year and a half, both had 18 years. Now, you're probably saying, wow, that's sad. And I do, it's sad to leave, they're both loyal employees. But Benson PD picked, I believe, both of them, paid them more money. But what they did was, they're two years from eligibility to retire, they also took their retirement debt with them.
They're tier one?
They're tier one. So they took their retirement debt with them. So there is a success story if you.
We're very, that's kind of a, that's kind of, I don't know. I get your point, yeah, I get your point.
And I don't want to see them leave, but you understand, if they're going to leave, that's the best time to leave, you know?
Yeah. I won't get into the stories.
But last I knew, you had a full staff in the jail, is that correct? Or I was saying, okay, I'd like to see less overtime, and that's the.
As far as the staffing and where we are, but so what, April, four months ago, we were approved eight additional staff to sign up in the old juvenile in Sierra Vista, and those are the only vacant positions with criminal paths. Other than that, we're full.
So you wanted ATOs, all for juvenile?
Well, it's, it's not juvenile, it's for the Sierra Vista substation. We're just changing buildings, but the way the physical plant requires additional staff, and we're due that because we're going to increase the beds from 19 beds to 42 beds.
And that's just in Sierra Vista?
Correct.
Not, not solely juvenile?
No, so, yeah, let's wait till the.
That's.
We'll get into.
There's another, what is this? It's under the jail district fleet charges. So the fleet charges are in two spots here, under the general budget and then under the jail budget.
So.
They're probably.
A half a million back from, what, when is that going to be? And when that comes back, is it designated for PSPRS? Because there's something that's designated for PSPRS.
Or previous board to set a program, whatever digital fund, it goes to PSR, goes to PSP.
Yes, so they.
We're very, we're very fickle. Everybody says they're fickle. My wife says she's fickle. But I still get the credit card bills, and I look at them, I go.
What I'm concerned about is inflation, devastating inflation. So, and it's going to be a bad thing for everybody.
I, I just don't know if there's savings from the border situation yet, because it's unrealized, because it just started. I mean, we've only been at it with this current administration for two months, technically since they were able to implement, you know, these falsehoods. So the dividend hasn't materialized yet to be able to properly gauge it. But, you know, is there, is there a way to save that? But I get what you're saying. Four years from now, if the political dynamic flips, and now they go back to the open the gates, let everybody in mentality, you know, and then you gotta rebuild what you've already spent a lot of money building, and that's a problem too.
Mr. Chair, I'll just say this, and one thing we're unique in Cochise County, and we've had this, I'll make it breathe, is we're still getting pursuits. I had two there night, we had one this morning, 7 o'clock, the guy bailed out. In fact, they caught him right behind the building here, I don't know that. We're still seeing the covert operations that, that you don't see on Texas where they run up. Hey, that's down 94% for give-ups. We're just up to being.
But the casual crossers are down.
Yes, thank you. But the crime aspect of it, like you're talking about, Kathleen, and what we're still seeing, the pursuits, we still seeing. And it's never going to go away completely, we know that. But the management's so much better than it was, I think we all can see that.
But is it, is it going to give you the opportunity to pull some of those guys off the border, put them out in Wilcox, or put them out in other places?
I think that's something really hard to predict. I mean, if you look at like.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, I know right now, that's, I get you. I'm just saying, but is that potentially the thing where you could look at that later and say, okay, my, my impact on the border, from the border is down, say, 50%? So I could take half my deputies that were working border cops and now put them in the.
It reduces that pressure of focus directly on the border. Our addiction teams can now start floating up into different communities and doing things that are directly impacted instead of having to chase the highways like we were doing before and looking for all the dangers there. It loosens up that pressure, but the reality's still there.
What I'm saying is, those guys are still there. They're just not doing the border stuff. And if the border comes back bad, then you can put them back. You still have the bodies to, you don't have to even build that thing. But they, utilizing them somewhere else in the county as their demand for operational pressure goes down. That's all. I'm just, Mr. Crosby was saying, then we need to get some nice houses built out in Wilcox and St. San Juan. So they can move out, move out there. Dude, it's a problem. I mean, I, we had that, we had that economic development. All I heard in that economic developing, there's, you know, our, our employees are in this salary range. They look for houses in this price range, and you guys don't have it. They're like, we don't want to build a facility here because there's no housing for our employees. Or, or, you know, we're going to build it in Maricopa County because the taxes are less, or the cost of living is less, and the resources and infrastructure is better. That's the, that's the balance. So we're in this, we're in this freaking hole economically, but we're trying to dig out of it. And it's just, it's just a challenge to try to create an incentive economically for people to come here so that we can generate more of it. I'd love to build a nuclear power plant here. We talked about that, that's, that's the cash cow for Maricopa County, is that nuclear power plant. I can't believe we can't build one here. I'd love to do that. That'd be a good one. That's another topic for me to deal with.
I mean, that's, that's.
Population. Our problem is, is a revenue problem, you know? And we have, citizens are demanding services. They, they live out here, but they want certain things, right? They want their sheriff's department to be able to show up when they call them, obviously. But they also want their roads paved, you know? And they also want hospitals. They don't, I mean, they're asking for all this stuff. And, you know, we're looking at the, Stacy gives us the revenue projections, and they're flat.
When you look at Douglas, like 70% are on government, you know, assistance.
So.
And, and so that's, that's, you know, and yet, you know, they want a hospital and they want healthcare. And then I think our health department is heavily on grants. And so it's, it's not fun, it's time to be.
Any electricians on the sheriff's way? So we can move on to the jail district or whatever. Wait, is it, is that at eleven? The week? We can, so we could talk for ten more minutes.
Okay.
Or we can take a bio break and.
Whatever.
I'm flexing it in there.
It's, it's.
It's concurrent? So we can start right in, into whatever we want? All right. So do you have any other?
On this, on this that you gave us, right?
Yeah.
Um, this was the difference between a few percent things or, oh, sorry.
The, uh, one's a fixed cost.
Okay.
Fixed raises and one's a percentage raise. So, uh, Mr. Chair mentioned three percent, a point five percent. So we broke it down from fixed costs, which the fixed cost helps. Uh, there is a difference in, uh, value. But also it brings, uh, our starting deputy to sixty and starting the detention officers to fifty. It's attractive for recruitment for only a few dollars difference. I do that. Just give you guys a different look.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. We good?
Yeah.
All right. So let's adjourn the sheriff's budget discussion.